I don't really think we closed down the discussion very well last time.
These are my go to meetings.
Anthony disagreed with them. We didn't resolve that.
In Kansas City, I'm not a head of the conference.
Good.
We can work night or whatever.
We can still go ahead and then move it.
Which is usually eight, twelve hours late.
Yeah, why you doing good?
We're all in here?
The one night we were loading tires in my trailer and we had it loaded all the way back.
You guys ready to roll? Ready? Okay. I'm running late, so I'll just make sure you guys are here. Okay. Okay, we're gonna go ahead and call our meeting to order for December seventeenth, so we're gonna call the city council meeting to order. If you'll please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which this stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Before we head into the proclamations, I just want to say that it's a tough time right now, and I want, I would just ask that everyone here in Stillwater, please keep Newton, Connecticut, and your thoughts and prayers, and the entire nation, because this is extremely difficult, and I don't know what the outcomes are going to be, no one does, but I think that it is a very, it could be a turning point for this country. And so I would just ask that you please keep those families, that entire community, and the entire country in your thoughts and prayers as we proceed through that, through this tragedy. So, thank you for indulging me with that. On our agenda, we've got a presentation, the mural on the Wynn Nelson Building, to Mr. Ron Jones and his crew, so you guys will please join me and he's gonna do it.
Um...
Say you got it. Rob or Jim, you guys, you guys wanted to say something?
Jim Scott, I don't get it.
Are we just gonna do a proclamation? Or do we...
Yeah, why don't you...
Come, come on up here, guys.
Yeah.
Okay, as everyone knows, on our, on the Wynn Nelson Building, we had a great crew that painted that, the great mural of the sunset, and unfortunately, it's one of those, that building is going to be removed, but in a way to help remember the beauty of that mural and the hard work that was done, we have got this wonderful, I need some help. I'm gonna speak this out here. We have this wonderful panoramic representation of the mural. So, we're presenting that to them for their hard work and creativity and artistry, and then we also have another one back, back here at City Hall, so we're gonna have it in a couple of locations just to be able to, we're gonna remember this, how great it was. So, anyway, thank you guys for all your work and... You guys wanna say anything, wanna describe it, or?
No. Thank you. I just, I, and I, without leaving it, Ron Jones, before you leave, Ron, raise your hands, everybody knows who we're talking about. Ron is quite the artist, multi-talented gentleman, been on staff at Walheim with the city of Stillwater, we're fortunate to have him. It's his artistic ability that led the project, he was able to teach and train his staff to, to help him in creation of it, but he was the, he was the artist and brainchild of the project, and just wanna say appreciation for that, Ron. Thank you.
Thank you. That's gonna take us down to the consent docket, and we've got items A through E of the consent docket. Is there anything council would like to remove from the consent docket?
I move acceptance of the consent docket.
I would second.
We have a motion and a second on the consent docket? And that passes five, ooh, look how small that is. That passes five to zero.
What's that?
It's getting older, but wow!
John, you're not that old.
Okay, that's gonna take us on down to public hearings, and our first public hearing is a comment on a request to close a portion of a right-of-way at 424 Southwest Street. Mr. Dorman, do we have good notice on this?
Yes, sir.
Wonderful. Ms. Evans?
Good evening, Patty Evans, Development Services. This is a closing of a twenty-foot wide portion of West Street adjacent to property addressed as 424 Southwest Street. The property is located on the northwest corner of Fifth Avenue and West Street, and if you can't read that, this is Fifth, and the north-south street is West. It is in the RTM two-family and multifamily zoning district, and the multifamily intermediate zoning district is adjacent to the north. The aerial shows a house on the property, I just found out today that that house has been demolished already. The red-hatched area is the portion of the West Street requesting to be closed. West Street is classified as a local street, but it has a one-hundred-foot right-of-way, and the land development code requires a sixty-foot right-of-way for a local street. There are no utilities in the proposed closing area, and the sidewalk will be relocated or a pedestrian easement provided at the time of development. The findings show that there are no utilities in the area to be affected. The sidewalk will be relocated or a pedestrian easement provided. Are there any questions?
Council, have any questions this time? Okay, thank you. We do have one request to speak, Ms. Harris?
Good evening, Kelly Harris, 923 South Lowry, here representing the owner tonight. This is a corner lot, has an alley on one side, and then Fifth and West on the other two sides. Just in order to have more buildable area, the owner has torn down the previous home and has plans to build another one, and he would like that additional twenty-foot of buildable area. Is there any questions?
Questions for Ms. Harris?
Not this time, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we don't have any other requests, so we'll close the public hearing. Ms. Evans, recommendation?
Staff recommends the council approve the request to close the twenty-foot wide portion of right-of-way of Southwest Street adjacent to property addressed as 424 Southwest Street.
I do have one question on the provision that there'll either be a sidewalk relocated or a pedestrian easement granted. Would the pedestrian, I guess, on the map that was up, the sidewalk runs through, well, I don't need to see the picture again, but the sidewalk runs through the middle of the right-of-way that's being, the current sidewalk?
Yes.
Runs through the current right-of-way.
Yes.
Would a relocated sidewalk stay in line?
No, it would be outside the property line, or in, in the new right-of-way.
Okay.
Yeah, it'll be outside this red area.
Okay. Any other questions for Ms. Evans? Okay. Do we have a motion on staff's recommendation?
Move approval.
Motion, a second, to approve staff recommendation?
There was a question there. Tell me if I understand.
No? But, we all hold for one moment, it...
He just said what he's saying.
Council prerogative, we can, yes, sir?
I was curious if anyone had talked with those two, they were considering making West Street some kind of connection to downtown, they were gonna put eight-foot sidewalks from Fourth Street north, and I don't know if it went as far as Fifth Street.
Okay. All right, thank, thank you. Thank you.
He may be talking about the redevelopment, corridor redevelopment area, this may be in that area, but...
Sounds like...
At this time, we don't have any, yeah, at this time, we don't have anything, OSU or the city or anybody gonna put in the eight-foot sidewalks, I mean, this is...
Thank you. Okay, we had a motion and a second to approve staff recommendation. And that motion passes five to zero. And that takes us to our second public hearing tonight, public comment request from Central Oklahoma United Methodist Treatment Facility at Upworth Villa for a specific use permit.
Yes, this item is a specific use permit, or SUP, for the ranch, the Upworth Villa Development, to allow single-family dwelling units and the assisted living, nursing, and memory care units, uses. The property is located north of the golf course on Washington Street or Highway 177, and to pull the property together, the applicant has gone through several processes. The northern portion here, that's still shown in the white, has recently been annexed with the RTM zoning designation. The area on the back of Peaceable Acres that's green has undergone a MAP amendment that has been approved to change that zoning to RTM also. So that brings all the properties, or all the property to RTM, two-family and multifamily zoning district. This slide shows the aerial with an overlay of the development, the center area here with the large building, that's the multifamily assisted living, nursing, and memory care buildings. There are six family, single-family dwellings located west of the multifamily structure, and then the largest portion of the single-family is here on the northeast corner of the property. The multifamily is a use by right in the RTM district, but the other uses of single-family assisted living and the nursing and memory care units are only allowed with an SUP. And the assisted living and nursing and memory care units are classified under healthcare and social services use. The findings include, the MAP amendment and annexation have been approved, and all the property is now RTM. The proposed single-family uses are allowed with a specific use permit in the RTM district, and the proposed healthcare and social services are allowed with a specific use permit in the RTM district. And the final is a, final drainage study has been submitted, and it is in review. Are there any questions?
Any questions of staff? Okay. We don't have any requests, but the applicant is present. Does anyone have any questions of applicant on this SUP?
I think it's great.
Thank you. Okay. So we'll open and close the public, I guess we have good notice?
Yes.
We'll open and close the public hearing, sorry.
Okay.
It'll all work.
At its regular meeting on November twentieth, two thousand and twelve, the planning commission voted six to zero to recommend that the city council approve the specific use permit to allow single-family dwellings and the health and social assistance uses in the RTM zoning district.
Last chance of questions.
I would move approval of this item as well.
Second.
Uh, Mr. Counsel Weaver had the motion, I don't know who had the second. And that also passes five to zero. Takes us down to resolutions, and Resolution twenty-twelve dash nineteen, resolution authorizing the mayor of City of Stillwater to sign and issue an election proclamation for a primary and general election. Has he got any questions on this? Normal standard, set the elections up.
And annual procedure.
Okay. Have a motion on this resolution?
I would move approval. Second.
Motion and a second on Resolution twenty-twelve dash nineteen? And that passes five to zero, and we'll jump down to ordinances, and on second reading, ordinance three-two-one-seven, Mr. Dorman?
An ordinance resounding property addressed as seven-one-one West Peaceable Acres from A Agriculture District to RTM Residential Two-Family and Multifamily District.
Okay. Any questions on this one?
Not this time, sir.
Yeah? We have a motion on this ordinance?
I move approval. Second.
Motion, second, on ordinance three-two-one-seven. And that also passes five to zero. Okay, and that takes us down to reports from officers and boards, Mr. Dorman?
I actually have something to report.
Oh, okay.
We received an order from the Supreme Court of Oklahoma late last week denying Cheryl Dederson's appeal and litigation against the city regarding the third penny sales tax. You might recall in this case, she alleged that the proceeds were being illegally used for non-SUA purposes. About a year and a half ago, the city tried the case in front of Judge Worthington, we were successful there, a unanimous court of appeals affirmed it, and we got a unanimous decision from the Supreme Court late this week affirming, or denying her writ of certiorari, which is a discretionary appeal. So, this case should be closed, and that's basically it.
Okay. Okay, so you said unanimous on denying cert?
Yes, actually, every judge that looked at this case sided with the city.
Okay.
From day one, yeah.
Well, I hope it's gone also, so anyway, thank you to you and your staff for the work on that, 'cause that was entirely too much work on that matter.
Yeah, Larry Simmons should be commended for that, too. He did, and I thought, an exceptionally good job with this. These public finance cases are hard to try, and he put a lot of time and effort in this, and obviously, we've got a very favorable result.
Okay. Mr. Galloway?
I'll just quickly mention, next Monday is Christmas Eve. Some cities observe two days of Christmas, we don't observe that as a holiday, we will be open, but I would advise people, if you have business on Christmas Eve at City Hall, get in early, 'cause I would fully expect we'll close about three o'clock on Christmas Eve, so just advise, if you have business to do with the city on Christmas Eve, come in early in the day, and we'll be posting some signs later in the week on the, on the door, but we'll be closing the city facilities around three.
That's it? Okay. Counselors, you guys have anything?
I wanted to, I wanted to extend my gratitude on behalf of the Homeschool Association to Dr. Peak for that, the cone that's going in at, at the Couch Park, yeah, Couch Park, they were very appreciative of that, and I wanted to pass that along to Dan and the rest of the staff, and I appreciate you guys handling that for me.
Wonderful.
I was hoping he'd be here tonight, but...
We'll let him know.
Anybody else have anything?
I'd like to say, in terms of Newtown, Ann Kane, the superintendent of schools, has sent out an email to everybody to include parents, to assure, to let us all know that our schools are safe, and we have some things implemented in place so that if something like this should occur, we're gonna do our best to make sure our kids are safe. And I really wanna commend her for the email and the way she handled how to get it out to the public.
Anybody else?
Margaret, everyone.
I was saying, I think that's, last city council meeting of the year, as far as I know, so I do, I do hope everyone has a...
Sure, we don't need to meet on Thursday.
Hope everyone has a...
There is one more Monday in this month.
I really hope that this is our last council meeting of the year, so I hope everyone has a wonderful Christmas and holidays and New Year. So anyway, thank you guys for a wonderful year. So, anything for upcoming meetings?
Not this time, sir.
Okay, do we have a motion to adjourn the city council meeting?
I move adjourn.
Second.
Motion, a second, to adjourn city council? That passes five to zero, city council's adjourned, and we will call Stillwater Utility Authority to order. And on Stillwater Utility Authority, we go to the consent docket, is there anything anyone wish, to remove from the consent docket?
I would like to hear items B and C.
B and C, remove from the consent docket. Okay, does anyone wanna remove the minutes? Just thought I'd check.
Not this time.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So move.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve item A on consent docket.
You didn't say trustee, though.
Ah, I didn't say trustee. Okay, that passes five to zero, drops us down to item four, remove from consent docket. Item B, we'll start with B, how's that? Counsel Weaver, you asked for this to be removed, I was gonna remove it if you didn't, so...
And I was gonna remove it.
And trustee Hopkins wasn't doing the same. Hello, Mr. Blankenship?
Hello, Honorable Chairman, Dan Blankenship, SUA Director, on the Southwest Water Distribution improvements, that is the first phase of the long-term improvements will carry us through the year 2040, projected growth in that area. The improvements include a list of projects, in fact, about eighteen million dollars' worth of projects, and in order to get those done in as timely and efficient manner as possible, we're proposing that we hire a single consultant to provide all of the professional services associated with that, including the management of the overall program, real estate services, which would be assisting us with acquiring easements as needed, design of the various projects, and then construction services, so that they would provide those professional services through the construction portion of the, all of the projects through completion. And we are asking this evening that you authorize the city manager to enter into that, or be able to execute that professional services agreement. Could you describe some of the more significant projects that are included in that eighteen million? Absolutely. We are going to replace the booster pump station at State Highway fifty-one and Country Club, that is the pump station that currently serves the water tower at Nineteenth and Range. We are going to add a new booster pump station in the vicinity of that water tower of Nineteenth and Range. We are going to replace the, what are known as the twin towers in the rural service area with a, with a water tower. We're going to completely, probably replace and upgrade the pipeline from the fifty-one and Country Club booster pump station, along Highway fifty-one to Country Club and down to the Nineteenth and Range Tower, and then there's a variety of other waterline improvements that are included in that, but those are the, those are the, I guess, the marquee items for this phase. And how do you anticipate this will be funded? This is actually gonna be funded with our water capital fund. Our water capital fund was established in July of two thousand and nine, it's a direct result of the cost of service study that we did at the end of two thousand and eight, was approved by the council and trustees at the beginning of two thousand and nine, and what that does is it takes the rates, and, and every rate, incremental rate increase that has occurred since July first of two thousand and nine, that, that money, the rate increase portion, has been set aside into this water capital improvement fund, and that money is being used to fund all water capital improvements. Our, our water rates, our sewer rates, all of our utility rates are designed so that the rate payers pay one hundred percent of the costs of operations, maintenance, and the capital improvements of the, of the utilities. The also, we also have money programmed in the rates to make a transfer to the general fund to help assist with general government, but as far as any improvements, operations, and maintenance of our utility systems, they're paid for one hundred percent by the rate payers. Would, is it fair to say, in your opinion, that once we are through and have implemented these items, we'll largely have solved our water issue?
Absolutely. Without a doubt.
Now, this is phase one, this is phase one of the three...
Yes, there are, there are three, there are three phases, and we are going to actually collapse phases two and three together, and we'll be coming back after the first of the year for the professional services agreement on phases two and three, so that we can just dovetail literally right on top of phase one and collapse the whole program down together to get everything out of the way.
Then, then that will take care of the water problem that we get, did by the engineering study.
Yes, sir.
Not only resolve the current problems, but it will, it will accommodate significant period of time, but probably a forty-year growth, patterns that are occurring in that, in that area. And again, I think the original plan for all three phases was phased out over multiple years, and we're recommending is to go ahead and collapse all those into a much shorter timeframe, get that section fully completed as we deal with other issues.
As we talk about this and water lines, can we use the word combine instead of collapse?
Yeah.
Sorry. Yes, sir, I'd be happy to use the word combine instead of collapse, I don't want to...
Trustee Pinia?
I do, would not, do not want to collapse any water lines.
Thank you, trustee Pinia.
Yes, sir.
In this phase one, does that include the water tower way out there in Western, what, Western and Sixty-third, somewhere?
Fifty, fifty, fifty-six, thank you, I don't know how I could forget that. The, the pump station on Perkins Road and the pipeline to connect the Fifty-sixth and Western Tower is actually already under design. That, that project is scheduled to move forward next summer, and so that the pump station will be built, and the pipeline from Fifty-sixth to Forty-fourth along Western connecting the tower with our distribution system, those, those are, those improvements, like I say, are under design right now and will be constructed next summer.
You authorize, those are almost pre-phase one, the trustees approved that and authorized that, so we're, we're actually ahead of schedule in some sense, and we're trying to compress the schedule.
Combined projects.
Thank you.
To the shortest duration possible.
Compressed is fine. I like compressed, that's pretty good. Okay, so, and I guess my question on it, I wanna just, I'm sorry, trustee Pinia, give me a second.
No, I'm good, thank you.
The, going off what trustee Weaver asked on how we're paying for this, and I just wanna make sure that we're clear, the public is clear. Do we, is this a good statement, I guess, by the best way to put it? We are not planning on any bond issues, any property tax, or any assessment on our users to pay for these improvements. Is that a fair statement?
That, that is, that is a fair statement, there wouldn't be any general obligation bonds. Now, we, we may go and get some financing through the state, or we may get private financing, but to, to retire that debt, all of the revenue will come from the fee, or the, the rates or fees that the customers pay.
Okay.
So, there are no, no taxes associated with that, it's a hundred percent based on the, the rates that individuals pay for that service.
And this, the rate schedule that was started in two thousand and nine, and there was a, a schedule of rate increases?
Yes, sir.
If I remember that schedule of rate increases correctly, there's one more increase, and then it levels off. Is that correct?
Well, we'll, we're, we're updating the cost of service study, that's currently what's there, one more significant, then, then there will be fluctuations, adjustments as, as cost...
The cost of operating, yes.
But, the, the rapid increase that you've experienced, we're at that, nearing the peak of that, so we're leveling off, but, you know, it just doesn't, it's water, sewer, and we're operating electric the same way we have been, and it's, it's unique, I believe, and it's not, let's say it's uncommon, it's not unique, there are other cities, but what we've managed to develop in the SUA is a completely freestanding entity, in that your, your water bill, your sewer bill, and your electric bill not only pay for the operation and maintenance of the system, but it funds all of the capital to repair, replace, and do the capital improvements in the system. That, that prevents the city from having to go ask the taxpayers for tax on your utility. Utilities should operate as a business, and we have a solid plan to do that, we, we don't have to go ask for taxes.
And this, this capital improvement fund is not only the funding mechanism for these improved... improvements and the improvements, the, the pre-phase one improvements that we're talking about, but it's also what we're going to be talking about here in a little bit also with the, the call line.
Yes. This, this water capital would be used for all capital improvements, including the call line. And in fact, you know, when we did the study, or the cost of service study back in two thousand and nine, you know, it was based on the plans and what we knew at that point. As time goes by, things change. As you'll hear with the call pipeline, maybe our approach, and some of the things are different with the call pipeline. And that was a significant part of it because of the cost there and some of the things we're doing in the Southwest. So over time, you know, it's going to change. And so every six or seven years, give or take, we should update our cost of service study and reevaluate where we're at and where we're going. So I would anticipate, once we kind of come to some equilibrium on the direction we're going with the, the call line, that we would be back and updating that cost of service study to make sure that we are making the appropriate rate increases at the appropriate levels to ensure that we can operate and cover all of our costs with those rates.
In this report, and I think at one point you and I, I had a conversation with you about, is the, it's, talks about, on the report after option three, three-year program extended to twenty fifteen, construction is forecasted to begin in late twenty fourteen. And I believe my statement to you is, oh, my gosh, that's unacceptable.
I believe that's what you said, yes.
And then I, and then what was explained to me, and I just want to make sure I understand it, is that's not any water improvement starting in fourteen, that's just these. We have plenty of others. Could you tell us, tell me some of the others that we're going to be doing prior to fourteen?
I could probably go ahead and ask either Anthony Daniel or Bill Millis to come up and, and address that. We have, I think, approximately a little over fifty other projects in the mill, whether it's a water project or a sewer project. And Anthony or Bill, would you like to come up and maybe just share with the trustees specifically some, some of those other projects that you have going on at this time? But you're absolutely right. This is, this is in addition to, this eighteen million dollar program is in addition to all of the fifty-plus other projects that we've got going on right now.
And I think the ones we're interested in really are the water pressure type one. That's the ones I'm interested in hearing about right now. I know we have plenty of other repair lines and do those things. But what other projects do we have going on dealing with water pressure?
With the Southwest Zone water pressure issues?
Sure.
Well, that's mostly combined into this one Southwest Zone overall project.
So what about, we have a jumper going across Country Club? That's going to be happening this summer?
Yes, we have a, thanks for prompting my memory. We have, we do have a jumper planned across Country Club from just downstream of the Sixth and Country Club pump station to connect to the Southwest Zone at approximately, well, just south of the Holiday Inn Express. And what that'll do is it'll then feed the Southwest Zone from, from two directions instead of just one and improve pressure and the amount of water that we can move to the Southwest Zone. The, as Dan mentioned, the Perkins Road pump station project, the, the waterline extension on Western Road from forty-fourth to fifty-sixth. Okay, yeah, getting more broadly, the twin towers area, not the twin towers, the school tower in the O's pump station area in the northern part of Corp. Three. We've got a, a contract in negotiation right now for improvements there to study replacing the pump station and also either replacing or most likely replacing the two, two existing stand pipes with a larger water tower at a higher elevation so that we can head off both existing pressure problems up in the northern part of our rural service area, but also allow for additional growth in the future.
Wonderful.
Those are some of the major ones.
Thank you.
And then, as you mentioned, a lot of replacement projects, water and sewer lines.
One quick question. I'm not familiar with the term jumper. What does this jumper mean?
A jumper is a relatively short connection between two kind of separate pieces. It's basically a shortcut for the water.
Okay. Is this a permanent fix or a temporary?
It'll, it'll be in place permanent. It'll do us a lot of good in the short term, but it'll also still benefit the system once the, the Southwest Zone phase one improvements are in place. And basically, now the water that, that supplies the Southwest Zone goes from Sixth and Country Club, you know, a mile west on the highway, then a mile south to the tank, and then, and then it comes back east along Nineteenth. And this would kind of shortcut it. So some of that water could take a shortcut and run down Country Club to get to Nineteenth and Country Club and get into the Southwest Zone.
Thank you.
Any other questions of staff on item B on the consent docket?
Motion to approve?
Second.
A motion and a second to approve item B from the consent docket. And that passes five to zero. We also had item C. Wait, I'm on the wrong docket. Item C, county or trustee Weaver asked to pull that one also.
Yes, sir.
What are we doing?
This is a, it's a waterline replacement project. We're actually relocating waterlines to accommodate a county and ODOT bridge project at where McEnroe and, and Range meet. It's called the Crookin Bridge, if, if you're familiar with that area. And they're, they have a project to replace the bridge and to, to realign the road approaches. So we're going to relocate, I think, about eight hundred feet of waterline to get out of the way of the project.
Just more note of my preference, and I don't know how the rest of the gentlemen feel, but water issues are so much on the minds of the citizens, I would recommend that we not have these items on consent. And we plan on discussing them as we roll them out.
Okay, sure, we can do that.
That would be helpful to keep the community informed of what's going on and, and the council as well.
This particular one is not a part of the pressures.
That's okay. I was going to move approval, but keep talking.
It's unrelated and necessary for a transportation project.
We can, we can sure plan on doing that as a rule as, as any of these water projects making a presentation.
Okay.
And we have a motion on item C. We have a second.
Second.
Okay, and that passes five to zero. And that takes us down to general orders, item A. Mr. Daniels.
Good evening, Chairman, trustees, and staff. What I have before you is a follow-up report of follow-up action that is going to be taken to the call waterline project. A report was presented by Mr. Morrison from Jason Consultants on October twenty-ninth. It was a pretty lengthy report. And I've come forward with three phases of improvements to the call line. The first set of improvements will be to redo or refurbish the entire cathodic protection system, the stretches from call to the water plant and out to the system. And we're going to take a good look at the rest of the cathodic protection that's at our storage facilities, three ground storage tanks and two elevated storage facilities. We're going to take a good look at them and refurbish them because not available parts and some of them are just not working properly. So before they corrode from the outside, we want to get something done and protect them and get some life out of these tanks and pipeline. The second set of improvements is at the pump station itself, where we're going to be installing variable frequency drive to the two one-thousand horsepower pumps. What this will, drives will do is it'll help the pumps to start slowly and minimize the surge that you saw last time, that wave, minimize it so that it doesn't bang the pipe every time you start and stop. It'll kind of cushion the impact. And there are three small pumps. They are lower head. These three small, small pumps were the first set of improvements that were done, are not able to operate in tandem with the big pumps. They fight each other. So what we're going to do is we're going to add some stages and refurbish them so that when the demand picks up, remember, we're going to be selling water to Lone Chimney in about six months' time. There'll be a time where we need to run one big pump and a small pump so they can work in tandem instead of having to start two pumps or trying to throttle them. And it'll help us to save some energy as well, become cost-effective. So that's the other thing to do. And we're also going to install a backup generator. That facility, although it gets power from the dam, does not have any standby or backup generator. And if you remember August of two eleven, when we lost power and we were standing on borrowed time because we didn't get any raw water being pumped in, the wind just knocked the power supply from both sources. And we're also going to be installing more, about six two-inch airless valves at the high points on the line. There are about twenty-two high points on the line. Right now, we installed six small airless valves during part of the first phase one investigation. We are going to be putting six more. So we should have a total of eight or nine of the airless valves when it's all done. So what does this do is when the pump starts, it'll help to breathe. When the pump shuts down, it helps air to get in. So there are no pockets or voids and so forth, or trapped air that induces corroded, corrosion in the pipeline. That's what we're going to do. And the third phase will be, when it's all done, we will try to see how we can install some valves to isolate segments of the line. Right now, thirty-six miles, there are no isolation valves. If there is a leak, anything, we just have to plug it with wooden pegs. There's no means of isolating the lines to do any repairs. So we like to find out and investigate how we can put some valves in to take line segments out of service and perhaps introduce this closed-circuit TV television camera equipment and run up down the line to see the condition of the line as part of our investigation and face the third part of the program. And with that, we are, I'm requesting that we move forward with these three sets of improvements as outlined in the report. And we also recommend that we cancel the contract that we have with Jason Consultants for phase two onwards, use that money to do these projects. And in the future, if you want to go and do this MFL tool, which I'd expressed concern the last time, it might get launched and running those pigs through, we can go back and renegotiate a new contract with them to come and do this magnetic flux leakage tool to be run through the entire line. With that, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Trustee Weaver?
Just item one, two, and three, these are all three recommendations that the consultant did make to us, right?
Yes, sir.
Is, you're, you're wanting to.
Move forward.
We move forward on this.
Yeah. Except the cathodic protection, sorry. I asked for a, a big picture look, take a look at all the cathodic protection systems across the city's distribution system.
I have, I had a question on the, the termination of the contract.
Yes, sir.
And this, I think this is another great example, kind of like what we were talking about just a few minutes ago about phase one, two, three, pre-phase one, all that. This, this is pretty complex and it's real hard to simplify. When we entered into that contract with the different steps of investigation to get to the end result of implement solutions, I guess my question on terminating that contract now is, do we really need to terminate the contract? We've, we've got them locked in to a price that if we need to go back and take some steps, it seems like terminating the contract before we're solid, we don't need them anymore. I, I have some questions about that.
It's not that we don't need them anymore. It'll free up the funds to be used for this project. And when we go back and we decide to use them, we can always go back and negotiate a contract. Their, their contract has got an escalation. It's not a fixed price for a determinate length of period. They have got like three percent built into it. Every year, the price goes up by three percent. And also, their contract, if it doesn't include the TV inspection, so which means they'll come back and ask us for more money. The contract doesn't include running a series of pigs. They only ran a cleaning pig and the magnetic flux tool. So when we go back and talk to them about doing the magnetic flux tool, they'll come back and renegotiate the contract. Did I explain that well, sir, Mr. Mayor? I'll try. Let me, can I try again?
I, I think I'm under control. Are you guys, does it make sense to you all?
Well, yeah, I can ask another question. Was the contract dated? Was there a termination date of completion?
No, but they said if it goes past a certain period, one year, it goes by. I believe it's three percent.
Trustee Pinia, do you have a question?
We, are we really talking termination? Are we talking renegotiating?
No, terminate the contract, clean break.
Right, breaking the contract?
Yes.
That frees up money to do some of these other things.
Yes, sir. Yeah.
But when we sit down at the table again to, to, in, in case we need them.
Yes.
May that cost us more money?
Yeah, because the, remember, the original proposal did not includes that, include the TV inspection, which they recommended. And also because there are wooden spikes and metal spikes in the line right now.
Just about that.
We are concerned that the MFL tool will get launched. So they're going to run a series of pigs. First, a little pig, and then they're going to, they say they can run a cutting pig and a cleaning pig before they run the final MFL two.
I think, I think the only thing that I'm looking at is, if, if I was sitting down with the city of Stillwater with a, with a contract and somewhere along the way, you, it becomes terminated. I'm going to look at that as not good faith at that point. And then when we sit down again, I'm going to look at, well, I'm going to get into this just so far, and then you're going to terminate me again. And are we going to get in that back and forth motion?
Actually, trustee Pinia, one, and one thing, and it, and maybe, and I just, I just asked Mr. Galloway, he, he reminded me that this contract originally, when we entered into it, it really, it had three, three steps to it. And each step was a, we authorize you to proceed at each step.
Yeah.
And we, we finished step one, and would this make sense, instead of using the word terminate?
Yeah.
That we would say, we're not authorizing you to proceed this phase two? Is that?
Yeah.
Accomplish what?
We're exercising the option not to do.
Not to proceed, yeah, because.
That, I feel better about.
We issued the purchase.
Option we can exercise not to do.
Yes, sir. We issued the purchase order for phase one, and we hold back. Then we issued the purchase order for phase two, then it becomes.
And we structured that contract that way. So if phase one, the results came back with the lines no good, we could say, okay, the line's no good, let's move on.
Yeah, that's why we had the option built in like that, yeah.
And I think, I think what Mr. Daniel was saying too is we could just simply put it on hold and say, we're waiting before we start phase two. But what we, what they learned from phase one are additional components that aren't in the contract anyhow.
Yes, sir.
So when you, if you just put it on hold, you're going to have to renegotiate anyhow. So it's simpler just to exercise the option not to proceed. And then we can pare down the scale of it when we get to that point and renegotiate the specifics.
Yes, sir.
It was not really a termination, it's just exercising the option not to proceed.
My problem was with the word termination.
Yeah. Yeah, that sounds pretty negative, like we're saying, we don't want, don't want you to work for us anymore. That's not, yeah.
What, what kind of timeframes on these, the three items?
The phase one, I mean, the, the cathodic protection, we plan to start at the beginning of the year and possibly about six to nine months down the road, we go, we will be simultaneously, or probably six months later, we start design of the VFDs and so forth.
Why the delay?
I really don't have an answer, but.
I think.
We can start.
All the trustees up here, I think, are very, very adamant.
We get going.
That their, every single water issue we have.
Mm-hmm.
Needs to be at breakneck speed. Now, I understand safety, I understand engineering, I understand, well, let me phrase that, I don't understand engineering. I understand the need for engineering, that there has to be design, and design can take time. But I want to express, and I think the count, the trustees will all be nodding along with me.
Yes.
That we, we cannot take our time.
Okay.
That everything must be moving as expeditiously, if not even more so, on all these water issues. And I know that puts a very large burden on this department, and I grasp that. And if that's something that needs to be addressed, we shall address it. But waiting for one to get to the other, unless there is a engineering sci, scientific reason, then we need to find a way to be getting stuff done faster. Is that a fair statement?
Understood, sir.
I would like to add the word break to the list of words that we don't.
I would like to second trustee Weaver, never using the word. Never using the word break.
This should collapse.
Okay. Touche. Breaking collapse shall not be used anymore.
I do want to, I'm not quite, I don't want to hear more tonight, but at some point, I, I didn't feel like we got adequate closure on the issue of what we were going to do with the consultant's recommendations. We had the consultant up here telling us that we should use a pig for further analysis. You came up and said, no, we shouldn't do that. And there, in my mind, there wasn't good closure as to why you felt that way, and, you know, we hired a consultant, paid him money, they're recommending an action, the staff are telling us no. So, I'd like to ask the city manager to follow up with that, and.
We will.
Let's try to close the loop on that before we just absolutely walk away from that recommendation.
I, I would suggest, you know, I think, I don't, you know, implementing these three components aren't tied to the contract.
No, right.
I would request you approve those, and let us, let us bring back a broader, broader pros and cons of what the consultant's recommending in our opinions, and let you vet that out a little bit so we're comfortable where we're going with that.
Sounds good.
I would recommend the approval of authorizing staff to proceed with the three components on the system as recommended, and table the other items for a future meeting.
Postpon.
The contract, yeah. Postpon.
I would make a motion to, to approve what he just said.
And I would second.
A motion and a second to, for items one to three, and we're going to take up the contract at a later date.
Actually, the motion is to proceed with the three items listed.
Okay.
Yeah, because you don't really have to take, if you don't take any action on the other part of it, then it's.
Okay. So, one through three at expeditious pace.
Not breakneck. Not breakneck.
Right. We have a motion and a second. And that passes five to zero. Okay. Do we have anything from officers?